Mayor Boyer could not be in attendance tonight, so as Mayor Proton, I'll be running the meeting. And we have two items on the agenda for the work session. First one is B and Broadway parking lot developers agreement. So I think it's on here so we can make suggestions and ask questions and see if we want changes made. This is a draft, so if there are any changes that we want to make or additions or deletions.
I'll say something. I sent a draft to Doug. Did that get circulated, Doug?
That's what's...
That's what you're talking about. The idea was one of two possible ways of doing this. One is some kind of specialized lease so that they have the use over at the Blue Rose for event nights, but the rest of the time it functions as pretty much a city parking lot for everybody else in the community, but that there is a special reservation and they're paying for it. They're paying for it by spending $120,000 on paving it. That's a pretty substantial rental, even if you amortize it over a period of years of existence of the lot. The other alternative is a type of development agreement where they agree to improve the site. We agree to allow them certain uses that are unique to them, but the rest of the time it still remains a city property and a city parking lot also. So what you have in front of you is the development agreement format. The lease type format would also be available to you. I don't have it fleshed out like this yet, but certainly could put that in front of you in a matter of days. So that's what you're looking at. I think this is something that's appropriate if it's done in the form of a development agreement, and it is something that is going to generally benefit the uptown population. But as far as the way the city would do it, you'd still follow 364.7 of the code, which basically says that you are going to publish notice of an intent to do this kind of an agreement, and it's going to have a long-term impact. And the long-term impact intended by this would be longer than a couple of years, so three or more years. 364.7 needs to have some kind of a public hearing and be the same kind of arrangement, whether you were doing it as a development agreement or a lease, however, because of the long-term impact. So that's pretty much what I can put on the board for you as far as the general idea of going forward with this with the developers over there. It doesn't have to be this way. There's combinations of these kinds of arrangements, and those are just out there for ideas right now, so.
Can I ask a question, John? Because it does say, it talks about two parking lots, both on B Street. One at B and Broadway and one at B and Briggs. But it's unclear to me, are they proposing to pave just the B and Broadway?
Just the one that's straight east of the VFW Legion building?
And that's the one that's going to have that signage limiting? Or are they both going to have signage limiting the...
Well, the one's directly east of the VFW. There's actually two pads there. If you looked on the way it's plotted over there, there's two pieces of lot. The pads are, I suppose, maybe 90 by, or more than 90, they're probably 110 by 50 each. And right now, they're, if they resurfaced, you'd have a parking lot probably, I think, would last you for 15 or 20 years.
But they're only talking about paving Broadway and B Street, right?
Just, just that corner piece.
And is that the one that would be subject to the parking regulations? Or both?
I think the other lot was mentioned because that's where the traffic will be redirected during events at the Blue Rose.
I guess I was just confused because it doesn't look like it's in that first paragraph, and then I couldn't see it anywhere else, so I was curious why it was mentioned at all.
I thought, I thought it was both lots, too.
Oh, okay.
But it's only mentioned in the first paragraph.
Yeah, we can certainly clean that up. Doug's right. It isn't intended that way, but the lots north of the VFW, they are also parking, it's courtesy of a long-term gift we got a few years back from the Danielsons', and we've been using those for limited, long-term parking. I don't think anybody, I don't see Melanie here tonight, but I don't, I don't think there's anybody that can park over there longer than overnight.
So that's the Broadway, I'm sorry, that's the Broadway and B Street parking lot, right? The one that's immediately, oh, that would be east. What are we talking about?
The ones that are north of the VFW building.
Okay.
There's two lots there. I think there's a row of them along B Street that are intended for overnight parking.
Okay.
There's also 12-hour parking that is in the interior part of the first easternmost part of those lots, and then there's a dividing strip that's landscaping, and then there's two more rows of parking that are closer to the alley in that block, to the north of the VFW building, and those, I believe, are all 12-hour parking. And the idea would be those are either overflow or they're where you redirect if you've got a limited event night parking use at the ones directly east of the...
So would they also be subject to that parking lot signage? That's, I guess that, so that's maybe if, if this is just a draft, then I would like to know more specifically which parking lots we're talking about being subject to the signage. Like, I have no problem if they're gonna, at their own expense, pave those, because it says pave the west and east lots of adjacent and located at the northeast corner of Broadway and B Street. So that's just...
Right. That's just the straight east from the VFW building.
Got it.
But there are two lots there. They would square up to a quarter of a block.
Because, yeah, lies between the two alleys.
If they're just, if they're gonna pave that, then I have no problem, you know, like restricting parking and putting up the signage and everything. I guess I was just confused about what's happening at B Street and Briggs.
Yeah, well, we, we don't know yet because they've never held a big event there yet, to my knowledge, and if we have to do some adjusting on the lots to the north of the VFW building, it's as easy as whatever the council says those lots are going to be as far as duration of stay. So in the past, we've never needed more than right along B Street, the very easternmost part of those, north of the VFW building, for anybody overnight, but there have been some pickup trucks and things like that that have been there for 24 hours or more in the past and not been ticketed. And I think it says that it's the one place where there can be overnight parking there, and then the rest of them are 12 hours. The 12-hour parking signs are also over in the lots east of the VFW right now that we're talking about Blue Rose paying for the paving, so.
We have other overnight parking around the downtown area, so it's not like...
Some of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, yeah.
And there must be overnight parking. I mean, there are people who live on the square, so there must be overnight parking.
Yeah, if you're a resident, I don't know, I guess anybody can park there overnight. There's no stickers to indicate if you live there or not.
How would we enforce that?
It's just, unless we get stickers from people who are residents.
Now, the people parking around the square, Your Honor, are basically, they still have signs that limit them to some, some times of the day when the street cleaner comes through. I don't remember what the signs say exactly, but I know that there are restrictions on their time, so it's not automatically that they're overnight there always.
So my understanding is that the B Street and Broadway lot would have signs that say no parking after 6:00 p.m. unless you are attending a Blue Rose event? Is that the intent?
Well, and I, I still haven't quite got that sorted with Blue Rose because their event nights aren't five nights a week.
That's what I was wondering.
They're occasional, so I almost thought we might want to discuss the possibility of hinged drop signs so that if it's an event night, our sign says one thing, the rest of the signage, the rest of the time just looks like another ordinary lot signage.
That would make sense if they just restrict the parking when there's an event going on, but they haven't indicated to us how many, how many parking stalls they need.
Not exactly, just that they probably anticipate that lot would be the primary place where people would park for the event. And the other thing that they have proposed is they'll make it attractive enough that there'll be kind of a node like we have around the square for landscaping, and probably be a, like a park bench and a light there that if somebody was waiting for somebody to be picked up at the parking lot or whatever, they could just sit there after the event. That's the way it's been described to me by Chris Johnson. So it, it sounds like a nice idea. It's, it's the, I guess, the concept between Chris and Alex Stanley that they want it to be something that sort of accentuates convenience for their building over there, Blue Rose, at the same time that it will get the same kind of use that it's already getting from other people that are regularly uptown, using the rest of the buildings in that block between Briggs and Broadway. So, I don't know, maybe we want to have them come talk with our committee about it, but I, I've been kind of dragging my feet, I apologize to the council for this, but with other distractions and stuff, but they were hoping that they'd have something in place yet, as far as least an understanding with the council by the end of the year. We've got another meeting or two, but as far as the idea and maybe the signage questions and things like that, those might be something that you want to have a committee talk over with them individually and then bring it back yet before the end of the year. So, I, those are my ideas, but Doug, you might have some thoughts on this.
Well, I, there's a couple of things that, one, there's a formula, how many parking spaces per square feet. I know that that's there, but that's an engineering question. The second thing is the parking enforcement, which we've talked about, that we need to, you know, who's responsible if they have an event, who tells the cars to move, and who's moving them. That would be, that could be somewhat overwhelming for, you know, our city resources to, you know, we need to get that language in there, you know. I don't know if they're going to have regular, you know, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday concerts, I don't know. And that we know that we can maybe notify some of these people owners and...
Well, I like the idea of having dropdown signs or have their people put up event barriers prior to an event, but then, you know, how do you notify the public ahead of time that they're going to be not able to use that lot?
Well, wouldn't we have signs saying that you have to leave at 6:00 p.m. and then the events would happen after that?
Right. But if you had dropdown sign...
But if we never have parking after 6:00 p.m., then hopefully that would set people's expectations.
Right. The question is, do we want to do it that way or not?
Seems to me all or nothing would be easier than like, sometimes you can park here, sometimes you can't.
Watch the dropdown sign.
Right.
We've had relatively light enforcement over there over the years. Sometimes there'll be a whole row of contractors' trucks or something like that, and we don't say anything to them because there isn't anybody else that's complaining about the space not being available. We do have the Eclipse lumber, I guess I call it the fire lot. It's what's left after the lumberyard fire up on Fourth Street next to Low Street. In that lot, you may occasionally find somebody with a camper that parks up there. You may also find somebody with a semi-tractor that they've decided that's where they're going to leave their tractor or their trailer for a day or two or more, and that is the intent of that, I guess I'd call it a free lot. And we don't have a lot of free lots other than that around town, so that's, I guess, an alternative place for somebody to go if they're a contractor and they've got a fleet of vehicles here and don't necessarily want to arrange for parking either in a private lot or people's driveways or something like that. So don't really have a good answer to that except for that Eclipse lot.
All right. So I guess question now, we'll close up here because we have another topic to cover, but any specific suggestions that you want to have included in this draft before we see it again?
Clarification regarding which lots you're talking about. Are you talking about Broadway and B and B and Briggs or just one?
All right. Okay.
That would be helpful for me. Maybe it was clear to everybody else and maybe I just didn't understand it, so I couldn't.
And I think the other thing we need to know is, do we want to have restricted parking 24/7? I mean, seven days a week? Or do we want to have dropdown signs where Blue Rose indicates when they're having an event by dropping the signs down and then that restricts the parking, which might be problematic if someone's parked there at 5:00 and the event starts at 6:00 and they don't plan to pick up their car until 8:00 or 9:00. That might be an issue, so.
Okay.
I'm not inclined to restrict it all seven nights of the week, though. That's a lot. There were six cars over there this afternoon.
Could the signs not just simply say parking will be restricted at 6:00, and then we could require that they drop the signs down early in the morning of that day if they're going to be using it?
Yeah, do that.
Ooh, say, and I mean, like...
People who run the Blue Rose thought...
Yeah, I know, but I just feel like it's a lot that you're, like, leaving up, and then would we have to enforce it? And I just feel like it would be easier to, I mean, I don't know, set people's expectations and make it easier for city staff or whomever is having to put the dropdown signs on, unless we, yeah.
Write it both ways and then we'll decide.
I think we'd do that. Yeah.
Okay. Second issue is vagrancy. I don't know. I was asked Chief Thomas to address the vagrancy question, I guess, in town and...
Well, who put it on the agenda? Maybe they should address it.
I think we did.
Oh, we did?
When that came up at the last meeting, someone told me.
Never mind.
And we had said, put all these in for the next work session, so I guess we'll start with Dave Thomas's explanation.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we're not sure who put it on. I apologize. I was supposed to remember, and I'm getting old, so. We stay in contact with both the city attorney and county. We also get law dates in reference to federal case law and state of Iowa case law and anything else in the appeals court that applies to anything concerning. We get once a month by email, but actually training. We have sign-on and take tests to make sure. But we're passing it every month to stay up, and vagrancy recently has been a concern because we've said the entire time vagrancy or homelessness is not a crime. In Iowa, we can only enforce crimes. The only times we, then when we get called for somebody hanging around, we always tell the citizens we have to have a crime. If you're complaining about a crime such as trespassing, you have to be the one responsible for the property, such as a parking lot, and then they can have us show up as long as they give us permission. The other one we usually get a lot of calls on are in, like, apartment hallways, and the residents will wake up in the middle, or in the morning and see somebody sleeping in the hallway. They're always real cooperative. We just advise them under the trespass law they need to leave, and if it gets to be a problem, then they can ban them permanently from the property. Parking lots, and the only other crime we might have is, like, disorderly conduct if they're yelling and screaming and not being quiet, threatening in any manner, that also would be a crime that we kind of get involved in. But the federal courts have said repeatedly that vagrancy alone is not a criminal act. You actually have, have to have a crime, and it is just something we have to educate. People that call and say, I don't want them, we live in a country that you're free to move around unless there's a crime happening, we're not going to get involved in that kind of thing. Did you guys have any questions?
So do you think, do you feel like we need additional ordinances to cover this topic?
John and I talked about it. It's, right now, we're kind of waiting on the, it's actually the Supreme Court, the federal Supreme Court. It's, we have very responsive city ordinance and they don't apply to vagrancy, but can apply. We have a state law that says you can't obstruct full traffic by getting in the road. We're in trying to fight people down. You also can't sell stuff without registering at City Hall. There's no charter, but you have to come in and register them, and sometimes we, you know, people saying, give me a quarter. You can't do that unless you're registered or City Hall, so we, we do have some...
You can register as a panhandler and you're good to go?
It's supposed to be door-to-door salespeople. A lot of times it's, when we stop by to tell them that with that attention, they go somewhere else, but we do have so many programs around the community. We talk to them about the meal programs we have and the homeless shelters we have, and some are very helpful, thankful for the handout. Some aren't. I, I don't think per se we would want a vagrancy law because of the challenges of now, every once in a while we'll get a tent city, but it is on private property and then we get a call from that property owner and they just have notified that they need to leave the property immediately because they're not, they haven't been invited on the property, they're not paying rent, they just need to leave. They have to leave right away, and almost every one of them is very compliant with the officers. They've got to kind of know them by first names and say, yeah, they're real decent, they just like the homeless lifestyle, believe it or not.
Chief, what homeless shelters do you tell them about?
We had one in Washington.
Washington, Iowa?
Yeah, at one time, and our deputies were volunteering to transport them there, especially when it got colder or they're out in the middle of nowhere. They don't like going that far, so a lot of times it's just to the next gas station, and then they'll let the next deputy in the next county know that, but it has to be a public safety. They're walking down Highway 34 with our clothes, you know, in the middle of the night, and they keep freaking people out, so we'll get several phone calls. Too far out in cold weather like we're getting, so a lot of times the deputies will just take them to the next destination.
Right. I just want to be clear, we're not directing with any homeless shelter in Fairfield, which is in county.
No, we didn't, we don't have one, we did have one in Washington that was taking, we just didn't have a lot of luck because most of our homeless are compliant, but they're homeless by choice, and we've offered and they just keep saying, no, I don't want to go to Washington.
The one in Washington, was it city-run or privately run?
I believe it was through a private charity type.
That was my understanding.
Yeah. It's also my understanding they're not, they don't have any more room, and they're not taking any at this time, any extra other than the ones they have now.
I conclude from that, what you told us is that you don't need any more tools and that you're handling it with what you have already?
Yes, sir, that would be our recommendation now.
We will probably have some more direction on this. Des Moines right now is dealing with a sort of a tent city vagrancy dispute, and by the time that thing gets through Iowa Supreme Court, they will probably be talking about the U.S. Supreme Court case out in Oregon, and they'll probably be talking about what we can and can't do as far as tent city regulation and things like that. That's what Des Moines has come to a head about, but it's not done. It's something that's in process. So I figure next spring there'll be some legislation, but it's also going to have to have some guidance from the appellate courts.
And that would be assuming that we wanted to implement anything like that.
Yeah. Well, I think our council has been looking at things, maybe they didn't look at it exactly because of a vagrancy question in town, but we have looked at things like alternate dwelling units, ADUs, tiny homes and things like that, which some other communities have looked at as an alternative, at least for maybe short-term, six months to 12 months, alternative housing for people that are dislocated or displaced or really need someplace to keep from freezing, and those kinds of things with a grant or something like that, maybe we could, you know, create something here. But right now, as far as direction from the legislature and so forth, they haven't said any more than just following what the general rules have been for about the last 50 years, that status as far as economics and poverty is something that's a discrimination if that's the only reason you're enforcing it, but...
I guess that's what I was speaking to more specifically, not that, you know, there would be nothing to do, you know, that we could do to address maybe homelessness, but more like just because the Supreme Court says that you can criminalize it doesn't necessarily mean that we would be interested.
No, you're right. You're right.
I got it, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, so we have a few minutes before the regular meeting starts, while we take a break and reconvene at 7:00 o'clock. 7:00, I'll call the regular meeting of the City Council to order. Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Thompson?
Yeah?
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, counsel, are there any additions to the agenda?
I just want to note that we need to strike the approval of the August Finance Report as it's not ready yet. And the total claims amount has changed, reducing it by five cents.
Oh, good job.
Yeah, found a nickel.
All right. So we're going to strike the August Finance Report from the agenda?
Correct.
And we're changing the total claims for, up to, to $144,422.90.
Correct.
That's what it says on the agenda, no?
Yeah.
Oh, I see. The printout ones.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
Gotcha.
Anything else? Okay. Approval of the, no, I'm going to approve the agenda.
No, but read the consent.
Yeah. Okay, consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the October 27, 2025 City Council meeting. Approval of the November 7, 2025 payroll in the amount of $154,841.15. Resolution authorizing fund transfer. Approval of the July Finance Report. Acceptance of the Beautification Commission minutes. Acceptance of the Volunteer Center minutes for October 14, '25, and October 21, 2025. Resolution of employment in the Parks and Recreation Department. Approval of the liquor license for Flamingo Lanes. Approval of special claims in the amount of $3,181.31. Approval of ACH payment to the Department of Revenue in the amount of $23,363.18. Approval of total claims in the amount of $144,422.90. There are no claims in excess of $75,000.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gandy to approve the consent agenda, second by Kness. Comment or discussion. Who reviewed the claims?
Tom did.
Not here.
He found the nickel.
He found the nickel. Good for him. All right.
May I ask? I know that I've seen this before. But just a refresher, the Wex Bank for QWO, what's that?
Uh, their police officers use that as their card for their field.
Got it. Okay.
Any further discussion? And call the roll, please.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, move on to public forums and appearances. We have one, Fairfield Journal, Brad Fricker.
First of all, I'd like to have a little clarification. I kind of like to see you there, Doug. But it says your name is Connie.
Why did I change the name place? I just changed my location.
So can I understand what's going on?
So Mayor Boyer could not be in attendance tonight. And I am the mayor pro tem, so I'm running the meeting.
Very good. Thank you for explaining-
Which, just so for clarification, so you know-
I appreciate that.
I'm still a member of the council, so I can vote and I can take part in deliberations.
I appreciate that very much. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
When will Bob be installed?
For, well, after January 1.
After January 1. Okay. Now, all that I didn't know and understand, and I greatly appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Doug. So I was going to say congratulations in order for Mary Connie. She fought a tough, tough battle against a good man. And she won. And I was going to congratulate Gandy for his win. But it sounds to me like you've just got that board tube completely locked up, Paul. I don't think anybody will ever beat you there. And then I was going to congratulate you on your win, Bob. And then finally, I wanted to say, I'm not here to teach you anything. I think everything I got to say, you already know. I see this as kind of a reminder. That's all I, that's all I mean it as. So, Bob, the oath you just took, which you didn't just take it, the oath you will take, is the same one that every person up there has sworn. Let's talk about that oath. You will promise to preserve and protect the Constitution against enemies foreign and domestic. The founders didn't tack on domestic for fun. They'd watch kings and governors, silence printers, break up crowds, and failed critics, and jailed critics. They knew the first move of any group that wants total control is to choke three things: free speech, free press, and the right to gather peacefully. They wrote the rules so that no one who dreams of doing that ever gets to vote on issues that affect all of our lives. Yet, we see it every week on the news. Elected officials repeat the oath like a speed bump on the way to the gavel. New York City's brand-new mayor stood in front of the same flag and swore the same words. Do any of you expect him to keep that oath? We do not want to let that attitude walk through Fairfield's door. You swore to defend every single right. That includes, and that includes, the last void vote in the First Amendment. The last note, the last line in the First Amendment. The right of the people to petition the government for redress of grievances. Translation: When 50 residents pack this room and say you're wrong, your job is to listen, not roll your eyes impatient or accuse them of misinformation. Labeling citizens liars because their facts oppose what you're trying to accomplish is not a governing strategy. It's an oath-breaking, it's oath-breaking in real time. It's oath-breaking in real time. I've sat right here in the front row and watched it happen. Packed houses, concerns ignored. Speakers cut off because their five minutes ran long. Motion is tabled so the tough stuff never sees daylight. That's not leadership. That's hiding from the people you swore to serve. You don't get a cafeteria plan with the Bill of Rights. You take the whole trade, or you don't take the job. So here's my simple, non-negotiable ask. Live the oath. Let every vote, every closed session, every time a citizen stands up and dares to say, I disagree. Treat that voice like the Constitution says you must, seriously and respectfully. See, tonight, I just needed a few minutes to look each of you in the eye and remind you of the oath you took and whose side you're on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad. Just one comment. Every time someone is elected or re-elected, they have to take the oath again. So Paul will be sworn in again, and so will Mayor Boyer.
Very good. Thank you.
Also, Matthew Raoult won his election.
That's right, Matthew. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mine was a little less contentious.
That's all right.
That's all right. That's all right.
All right. We'll move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. So the first action item is consideration to award bid for proposed Adams Avenue Improvement Project. And I think we only had one bid on this, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. Good evening, counsel. Yeah, we received, we opened bids for the Adams Avenue Resurfacing Project on November 6. We received one bid from Norris Asphalt out of Atumwa, Iowa. Their bid was for $361,558, which is under the engineer's estimate of $390,000. I'm here to answer any questions on that, or were you to make a motion on that, that item?
I move to approve awarding the bid to Norris Asphalt.
Okay, we have a motion by Kness.
Second.
Second by Esti. Discussion. I have a question, but it's not relevant necessarily just to this-
Yep.
-item. So there was a post on Facebook a week ago, maybe, that we have a lot of single bidder bids, but I don't remember very many, if any at all. And then this one pops up right away. So do you have recollection of, if we've had very many bids, that only had one bidder?
No, not too often. The only projects that typically do have maybe one bid are, are like small, complicated projects, or asphalt projects kind of down in southeast Iowa. Norris Asphalt is the only really asphalt company to work down in this area. So they're typically kind of the only projects that are, they're more specialized projects, like if certain like structural projects or something like that, you would, might get one bidder on. But typically, most of the projects that I've been involved with, Fairfield, they have more than one bidder, except for maybe these asphalt projects.
Okay.
Marcus?
Yes.
Did LL Pelling submit a bid?
No. No, they did not.
Because they're the only other ones I can think of, regularly.
Yeah, and they typically don't do asphalt down this way. It's typically what they do is usually more on the seal coating type of items down in this area. And I think that's just because of their haul distance for their asphalt and their materials.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, consideration of Iowa Economic Development for Innovative Rural Housing 2.0 Grant Agreement. The motion was not, the attachment was not there at the time I read the agenda, but it's present now, I guess, right?
Yes.
Does anyone want to speak to it, or?
I haven't actually read it, so.
Well, I have moved to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
A motion by Gandy, second by Kness, to approve the Innovative Rural Housing 2.0 Grant Agreement. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's call the roll then.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Now, I'll open a public hearing on the matter of amendment to Chapter 11.40, Recreation Activities on Reservoir. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and we can consider ordinance 1271, Consideration of Amendment to Chapter 1140, Recreation Activities on Reservoir. This will be the third and final reading, if it passes.
I move to approve and adopt Fairfield Ordinance Number 1271.
Motion by Esti.
Second.
Second by Kness to adopt Ordinance 1271. Any discussion? None? Let's take the roll then.
Esti?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, another public hearing on the matter of the amendment to Chapter 10.30 Streets with 35 miles per hour limit. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we can consider Ordinance 1272, Consideration of Amendment to Chapter 10.30 Streets with 35 miles per hour limit. This is the third and final reading. Should it be adopted?
I move to adopt Ordinance 1272.
Motion by Kness.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
All right. Another public hearing, and more public hearings than we, items, on the matter of amendment to dog fines. So this is an unnumbered ordinance, it's the first reading. We're adjusting dog fines, increasing them by $25 for each tier, right? Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the ordinance concerning dog fines? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and we can take up ordinance, doesn't have a number yet, Consideration of Amendment to Dog Fines, first reading.
I move to approve to the second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion to move it from the first to the second reading by Kness, second by Gandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take the roll.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
All right. Another public hearing for another ordinance that's not numbered yet. So this is the first reading. This is a long one. On the matter of an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain properties located within the Sunrise Trail Urban Renewal Area in the city of Fairfield, County of Jefferson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Fairfield, County of Jefferson, Fairfield Community School District, and other taxing districts, which means this ordinance will apply to all bodies that are allowed to tax that property in that area. That's why they're listed. And they independently have to approve this as well. So, other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued to, or be issued, or to be issued, sorry, incurred by the city in connection with the Sunrise Trail Urban Renewal Area Phase 1 parcel. The short version of this is, this is a TIF district recreation for the portion of Sunrise Trail that's going to be developed in the near future, which is parcel 1. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address that ordinance? Not seeing anyone, I'll close the public hearing, and we can take up the ordinance that's in its first reading.
Motion to move said ordinance to its second reading.
I will not.
Second.
Motion by Gandy, second by Kness, to move this ordinance from the first to the second reading. Any discussion?
Do we know, has this been adopted by any of the other taxing entities?
Yeah, this is actually the last step-
Oh, okay.
...before we can start doing like TIF certificates, certifying the debt to the county.
So they've already addressed it all?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Good to know. All right. Paul, call the roll, please.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Just so the public knows, an ordinance does not receive a number until it passes the first reading. So next reading, it'll have a number associated with it. All right, that's the agenda for resolutions and things like that. Mayor's report, I do not have anything to report. City attorney report?
Couple things. I've been away for about eight or nine days. While I was away, one of our matters in court had to do with a nuisance property up at North C Street, 604 North C Street. We've been in court on it since last March. And we have work out that was to be brought in front of the property committee, with that property likely being given to the city, similar to what we did with Kevin Franklin over on Sixth Street. The property was in bad enough shape that we felt it might be torn down and become an infill lot. While I was away, apparently, a person interested in buying the property out of the condemnation proceeding in court showed up. Don't know any details about what the offer proposed is, but the person that was the private owner in court, I haven't been able to reach her yet. I've only been back a day. But I did attempt. And I'm looking for a little bit of direction from the council on this. We have a- We, uh, we have a pretty nice possibility for an infill lot up there. The property itself is somewhat like the property that Dr. Goodman had over on B Street. The windows are broken out. Uh, the property's been, um, open to animals and so forth since last February. Weston, our former, um, inspection officer, thought it, the best thing for it was probably to be torn down. The owner of the property received it, uh, from a gentleman who passed away. Before he passed away, he deeded it to her, but it was subject to a creditor's lien that he had. Um, the way to get rid of the creditor's lien is to do a 657A proceeding, where the title ultimately ends up in the city, unless the owner wants to deed it to the city, and then the city deals with the creditor. My impression is from, uh, abstract search and so forth, that the creditor will have to put up or shut up about the property, probably in about another four months. Uh, they have an old lien, and I'm talking about nine years old. But, uh, at this point, somebody has stepped in and says they want to buy the property. My impression of it is if we bring them in, like we were going to do with the owner right now and talk with it, cause the owner did indicate that she, she did this in writing, that she was prepared to deed it to the city. Uh, but wanted to meet, it was a property committee, uh, and the whole idea was that if she gave it to the city, city would probably acknowledge that the lot is worth nine or $10,000. The best we could do for her is probably give her, uh, something I mentioned a couple meetings ago, called a Form 8382, which acknowledges a gift, uh, and lets that person have it for credit on their tax return sometime in the next five years. This woman is not in a position to overhaul the entire house. She doesn't want to overhaul the entire house, she just wants it not to be her problem. So I guess my thinking is, would the council prefer, uh, that we just go ahead on the path that we started with Weston, uh, and head for a 657A and a teardown and a new infill lot? Or do we want to entertain a discussion with the person who's offering to buy the property and see what they're willing to do? I've driven by the property about once every month. It's, as I say, it's similar to the condition of the property that Dr. Goodman had up on B Street, which is, um, animalized, I guess is the best way to characterize it. You've had critters in it for now probably seven or eight months. Uh, and, uh, that means more work than you probably can see from the street. But the other, other part of it is, um, um, I don't want to step on the owner's toes if there's a better deal for the owner and she has a chance to realize something out of it, and the investor really wants to put the money in. My suspicion is that the invest, investor is probably looking at a chance to turn it into a two or three unit, uh, rental without much improvement except paint. Uh, and that ain't what the city council wants to see, in my opinion, generally on these homes. I think it needs plumbing, I think it needs new windows, I think it needs places where there's porches that are rotten and other things. But I'm not the inspector, I just, you can see it when you drive by it, uh, and get close in the alley and stuff like that, so.
Did Weston generate a report on this building?
Um, we have, what we have in court, which is a set of photographs of the condition of the building with windows broken out, parts of it broken down. Uh, and, um, i- it's obvious it hasn't been lived in for several months. Plus, we have a letter from the owners, uh, that inherited it, saying that's the case.
My recommendation would be to follow what we, the path that we're going down.
That's my inclination too, I was going to ask what the next step is in the 657A.
Right, the 657A, we would file, uh, with the consent of the, uh, owner that wrote us the letter saying that she'd like to be involved in a friendly litigation. We haven't filed the 657A.
I mean, the council's already taken action on that.
Well, we've, it's been talked about before, yes. So at this point, we didn't have anybody off on the sidelines offering to buy it. So it's, it's a new ingredient, but, uh, essentially, uh, it's a last minute, I think, attempt to, uh, buy something at a, at a steal.
Well, why don't we put it on the next, agenda for the next meeting to proceed with the 657A, or whatever we've already authorized.
All right, I'll get a resolution ready for that, and, uh, I will communicate back to our owner now. If our owner says, no dice, I just got a $50,000 offer on it, or something like that, we'll probably have to have a property committee and, committing instead, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Right.
Cause you'd still have to pay off the lien.
Yeah, there's still a lien to pay off, which is, uh, I think $16,000 is what it is, but nobody's doing that right now. All right.
Anything else?
I, I think that's it, for me.
Then, uh, no committee and board reports. And, um, city administrator's report.
We have fire station walls. And they have come in by the truckload, and they're averaging, and they told me that they were going to put in eight panels a day, and they're averaging, uh, I believe 10 to 12 panels a day. So hopefully by the end of, I want to say next week, that they will have the panels installed, but then that means there's flooring. There's going to be, they've got to put the roof in and out, I don't know which one goes first, I would assume the flooring does, but I don't know. Then, all of a sudden, it will look like they're not doing a whole lot after they get the windows and the doors, because the trades have to go in, and they have to get plumbers and carpenters and electricians and all of those things in there. So, big progress for right now. It's kind of exciting, cause it changes absolutely every single day as you drive by. I also wanted to mention, I didn't get to talk to the chief about this earlier today. I'm going to be discreet about some of the things that I say, but we have installed now cameras on the outside of this building, and there are actually new cameras inside this chambers and throughout, uh, City Hall. I can tell you that there has been an uptick in some of the people that come in that we serve, that maybe do not like our processes, but those processes are in place for a reason, that, you know, that we are impartial and that we do the certain things, and they take it on, and the employees that work here. And that is never okay. We've had employees threatened, we've had employees outside of this organization be threatened, um, with their lives. And those things are not acceptable, that we, everybody that works here, uh, has a family to support, and that we enjoy the work that we do, but we have to maintain the city infrastructure and our right of ways, and all sorts of different things, that if the lights go out, somebody needs to be there to, to make sure that they go back on. And, but, we're, we're going to step on our easements that usually are adjacent to your properties or on your properties. And we have a legal right to do so, and there, our employees should not be accosted. So, anyway, I just wanted to let the council know that these sorts of things, that we do want to be transparent, but we also want to protect our employees, that's always the number one thing, cause they're the ones that make the magic happen. So, other than that, we've had some really good things going on that we're excited about. Uh, we're still working on the city app for, to pump out communications. Uh, we will be, have it a presentation shortly in a study session that we've been working on for months. And we, I don't know whether Shelby will be having some of these vendors come and talk to the council. I would assume via Zoom, cause they don't, they're not even in this state. So we're still working on that, trying to get all the information in front of you, that you will be able to make a good decision. That also, City Hall survey of what we need to do, what next steps are, you know, these properties that are beside us, that we had an opportunity, they're selling, and apparently selling quickly. Uh, I do see a sold sign out there, so, you know, but that doesn't mean that we can't do other things. Then, and city crews are shifting gears, uh, into the winter season. We've got our first sprinkling of snowfall, uh, I believe that was Sunday. And they are, uh, preparing, uh, their equipment for snow removals, because here in the next month or so, hopefully we won't get 40 inches of snow like I've seen the first year that I was here. And, um, yeah, welcome to Iowa. But, uh, other than that, I sit for questions.
No questions? Enter into motion to adjourn. Moved by Esti.
Second.
Second by Kness, motion to adjourn. All the papers say aye.
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 Fastest council meeting.
Fastest council meeting this year, huh?